Hey Jackie. Good, I bet you.
Okay, it looks like it's six o'clock, council. Let's go ahead and call this meeting to order. Appreciate everybody being here tonight. This is the Edgefield County Council Meeting of February 7th, 2023, 6:00 PM. We're going to start with the invocation led by Mr. John Hudson, followed by the pledge of allegiance. If everyone will please stand.
Lord, we thank you for your heaven tonight. We thank you to God of Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob. You're the one of the Holy Spirit. We ask the Holy Spirit to reign here tonight. Let us be in one accord. There is no leaven right here tonight when the Lord binds over this place. And we ask for your wisdom. We ask for eyes and the ears of the Lord that we may know what's right from wrong. And let your kingdom come in this place and this camp. Lord, in our safe, we pray, we bless our enemy. We pray for those that spitefully use us. We give to those that ask us. And most of all, it says, "Seduce and occupy and take dominion and multiply till the great day of the Lord." And this we will do with the help of the Holy Spirit. And we give you all glory and honor in Jesus' name. And everybody say it?
Amen.
Thank you. Please join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Good to see everybody tonight. Next, council is the approval of the agenda. I have no, no input there other than what you see before you. Are there any changes we need to make to the agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Chairman.
Yes.
I would just like to intervene at this point. I've just been given some information. This note, this meeting was posted for notice on our website 24 hours in advance. There have been some question whether it was noticed by, on the bulletin board in publicly accessible place. My feeling is that we have posts on records. There's been ads run in the paper. There's been ads run for the public comment. So it's, my understanding is that there's some people here that feel that this meeting may be improper because of not posting on bulletin board 24 hours in advance. What I suggest, and I haven't discussed this with you, even though we go through the agenda and everything, is we may want to revisit some certain items on a special meeting, just for the third reading purposes. So, and I'm sorry for just throwing this at you. This was just given to me just minutes ago.
Okay. We will take that up at the appropriate time.
Okay.
All right, so back to the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Albert Tauber makes the motion. Is there a second? And Dr. Kenyon seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next is our guest speaker, Will Williams, the president and CEO of Western SC Economic Development Partnership. This is Will's annual report to us, if you will. So, Will, we'll turn it over to you and see how we're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council. Y'all heard a lot of this last week, but I tried to add some more flavor to the menu this time. So during 2022, Chairman Campbell, Kell Anderson, who's our director of existing industry, and myself, visited seven of our existing industries that are in the county. All of them are doing well, but they do have a similar refrain. They can't find employees. But yet they keep, keep on keeping on. And two of those companies we met with that said they can't find employees also have pending expansion projects that we'll be learning about in the months to come. So that's good news. Our existing industry base, which is very important, is thriving and doing well. There were some infrastructure projects related to the Generac location at the industrial park. It was a 600-foot waterline extension, a 600-foot road extension, and new monument signage at the entrance to the park. So there were grants that helped pay for the waterline extension. The CTC helped with the road extension. And a grant from the South Carolina Department of Commerce helped offset the costs of the sign, or the two signs that are at the industrial park. We've, obviously, we get RFIs, which that's an acronym for request for information. We get those. And they have specific items in them, like they need a certain amount of acreage, a certain amount of power, a certain amount of water and sewer, all those things. So last year, we were able to respond to two of those, just based upon the projects nowadays are looking for larger acreages and, and certain things that are outside of the county's control, like the available power and how long it takes for it to get there. And then also those two projects that I mentioned, the existing industries that are considering expansions. So let's talk about the industrial park. I read the article in the paper that y'all are at your strategic planning retreat and y'all are looking at things for the park. Right now, you all, the county owns 49.2 acres in the industrial park. Our organization owns 21.4 acres. They back up to each other and they are to the rear of the Generac facility. Generac has a 10-year option on both of those pieces of property. So at, at an appropriate time, when they're ready to expand, they'll just move that building on back. That, those options last for 10 years. So that, that property is, is tied up. There's 145 acres that remains in the park. Now, not all of it's contiguous. There's 82 acres on the, I guess, the Trenton side of Generac. And then there's, the balance of that acreage is either in the front or on the western side of, of Generac. Those 145 acres are owned by a local LLC. And the county does have an option with a fixed purchase price on that if they were to purchase it. But it also protects an existing, or, or an industry that may want to locate in there and buy the property. Because what happens sometimes, a property owner will come in and they, they kind of think they know who the company may be. And so that $10,000 or $15,000 an acre becomes $40,000 or $50,000 and the company goes away. So that's something in economic development we have to have now is an agreement that shows there is a fixed price to purchase that. I say that because what I, moving forward this year, I would encourage you all to look at acquiring some part of that acreage and we begin the process of getting it ready for development. If you've ever ridden by there and gone down the road, there is not a flat spot on, on either side of that, of Generac. So we would be able to get grants to do rough grading of a pad. And that cuts down a company's development time by several months. So those are things that I would ask you as you are continuing to allocate funds. That would be something to take a look at. Piedmont Tech, as you know, is looking at building a Edgefield County Center for Advanced Manufacturing. That is from money they received from the plutonium settlement from the United States government that came through the state. We're still working, Piedmont Tech, and we are working with them on how that's going to look. Obviously, in today's environment, $15 million does not go very far. But, but they, they are planning it so there could be expansion capability. But they would locate that at the industrial park for, for numerous reasons. Number one, so that we could demonstrate to a prospect that we have space where a new industry could train their employees. But also, so students, Piedmont Tech has been meeting with the school district and Fox Creek about things that their students could be involved with, more from the technical training side, such as mechatronics. You all know what a great job the Career Center does, educating the, the students in, in Edgefield County. But there are some things that they just don't have the space for. And Dr. O'Gorman is, is been talking to Dr. Rivers, the president of Piedmont Tech, in establishing programs. And then the students at Fox Creek, they don't have any way to get career and technical training. So this would allow them that opportunity as well. So I, I don't, it, this is still in the planning stages. So I don't know how long it'll be before construction would be underway. The last thing I'd like to mention to you is we're in the second year of a contract with Retail Strategies, which is a firm that works with communities of our size and slightly larger to help attract retail opportunities. And they've been in the county several times. They did a boots-on-the-ground tour where they went and evaluated some of the properties, some of the locations. They've run the data. They've shown where leakage is. Leakage meaning if it was in the county, those dollars would not leave the county. They would, they would stay here. And, and they've been at hard, hard at work. The first year was, was not as successful. But the most recent report that we received, they've, they've had a lot of activity. There's a lot of interest by retail establishments. A lot of them are restaurants. And so, you know, they are work, they are working on our behalf to try and find more ways to keep dollars in Edgefield County. And I, I don't want to leave without talking about the unemployment data. In December, it was 3.1% of, of the people in the workforce in Edgefield County. That's 312 people. And we were either just high 200s or the low 200s, except for October. And if you remember, Generac had, would let a shift go. And so the numbers, you know, did go up a little bit, but most of those people have been absorbed based on the data that, that I'm seeing and from talking with different employers in the area that picked up those employees that were dislocated. So that's all I have. Any questions from you all?
Any questions from Mr. Williams?
Will, didn't you say Monday night we lost two potential industries because of water and lack of power?
Yes, sir. I mean, it, there are some things that the county or the Water and Sewer Authority, it's just not economically feasible to do. And, and in a time period, the, the one that we lost for water, they needed over a million gallons per day, which is great, which as John Hare told me, works fine when nobody's watering their grass. So November, December through February. But then when people start watering their grass, you don't have the water capability. That's, that's a huge outlay of, of, you have, there's pros and there's cons. So I don't know that the juice would be worth the squeeze of upgrading to be able to get that much water. And then, you know, we work constantly with Dominion and Dominion's a regulated utility and they're an investor-owned utility. So sometimes those are, those are not easy conversations to have, so.
Any other questions, comments from council? Hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Williams, for being here tonight and giving us that. All that sounds good. All right, council, next on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the January 3rd, 2023 meeting. Any question or comments on the minutes? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Ms. Ireland makes the motion. Is there a second? And Mr. Moody seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next is public, comments from the public. Let me say a couple of things that I usually say, but for those who haven't been here. First, you'll notice the first public comment period says for agenda items. So this public comment is for things on the agenda. Second, you shouldn't comment on the two public hearing matters because you want to do that in the public hearing. So the first, on the page two, we see the public hearing, there's two things. Animals shall turn a sale of some land. If you're here to speak on those two things, you want to speak in the public hearing. And finally, it's five minutes for total for a person to speak. And the clerk will give you the four-minute warning and the five minutes your time's up. So with that, Madam Clerk, if you wouldn't mind giving me the list of people who have signed up for the first public comment period? It's all right. That's why I say this ahead of time, so everybody can figure out where they're supposed to be. So this is the first public comment period. So only one person? All right, so we only have one person then signed up for the first public comment period. Rhonda Norwicki.
There we go. Okay, Rhonda Norwicki, 27 Garrett Road. I'm mad at a multitude of things, but I'm going to just cover one topic. And I know we already talked about it, but I just wanted to make public for the public to hear and understand. We used to get the meeting agenda and exhibits on the Friday before, allowing time for the citizens to read it and to digest it and possibly contact the representative about whatever issues they may have. Then we went to getting it on Mondays with a Tuesday meeting. Obviously, most folks don't have time to read or comment on it. This week, we didn't get the email and the documents until we called and they were not posted on the building. I'm not trying to beat up Aretha. I already talked to her. It's not about Aretha. It's about county council following the law. I know we make mistakes. I make mistakes. I don't want anybody to beat up Aretha. I'm not an attorney. But if I understand these documents correctly, these things must happen in order to have a legal meeting. I've given Andrew a copy of it before the meeting. This is state law. It says, "An agenda for regularly scheduled or special meetings must be posted on a bulletin board in a publicly accessible place at the office or a meeting place of the body, public body, and on a public website maintained by the body, if any, at least 24 hours prior to such meetings." That didn't happen. We also have ordinance, but that's state law. So I ask you, is this a legal meeting? What are we going to do to fix it? And are we headed to another lawsuit if we don't fix it? I don't know what the answer is. I really think the public needs the documents sooner so that they can contact you. They can't even contact you if they don't have the documents to know what's on the agenda. And most people coming home Monday night, they're putting their kids in front of dinner. They're getting ready for work Tuesday. They don't have time to read documents. They need the weekend to read the documents. That's just me. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, council, since no one else signed up for the first public comment period, that public comment period is now closed. We will move to reports. Any questions or comments from council on the reports? Hearing none. We'll move to the consent agenda. You can see the items on the consent agenda. Is there anything we need to remove from the consent agenda? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tauber makes the motion. Is there a second? And Ms. Ireland seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Now we're down to the two public hearings we've discussed. So the first public hearing is on ordinance 2122792 to replace Section, Chapter 6, Animals in the Code of Ordinance. So there's not a sign up for this, so we'll just take you as you want to come. So is anyone here to speak on that ordinance? I'm sorry. I was waiting for someone to walk up, so yes.
No, I was being respectful for a change. Don't get used to that. Name is Desdemona Pastadzki. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I know. I don't like talking into that. There's only one issue I have with the ordinance. I think it's been addressed. I'm fairly certain it has been addressed, but I haven't seen the redraft. The word "shall" is open. The word "will not" closes. What I'm trying to say, the point I made with Mr. Moody, if you state in there that the officer shall not enter, that leaves him open. If you state he will not enter, there is no more doubt. The doubt is removed. And I don't know. Was that fixed, Mr. Hart?
So it was phrased "should not", and I changed it from "should" to "shall," meaning mandatory. So "shall not" means it cannot happen. Shall, you cannot.
Just making double sure that I fully comprehend, because I don't want anything left open on that for you guys to get sued.
No, you, you are correct. It, it originally was phrased as "should not," which was not the correct language. And I did change that, yes.
All right. Fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak on that ordinance? See no hands going up? So if not, then council will close that, uh, public hearing for that ordinance and open the public hearing for ordinance number 2122793, an ordinance authorizing the delivery of an agreement of purchase and sale and conveyance of certain properties between Edgefield County and John McCracken, his successors, and a sign. Is there anyone here to speak on that item?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of council. Sure you're not surprised that I'm up here to speak on this matter. It started about two years ago in a public hearing where I asked, was it an appraisal? What did the property conveyance include? And how many, how many, how many acres did it, did it include? And something else about the project. Anyway, I still have some questions because I still have not, well, was the property advertised? And I still have not been shown where the property was advertised for $50,000. It was put on GOV deals, but the agenda continues to say the property was advertised for $50,000. Request for proposal was advertised many years ago, but as far as a sale price of $50,000. Have you got, have you got it there, Ms. Ireland, where it's advertised for $50,000 sale price?
I have it where it is listed.
I asked Mr. Caddell and he hadn't been able to find it. So, and, and previous administrators. So you got it?
I have it right here where it was listed for sale. We don't list a price because I'm, but it is listed for sale. This is a copy of the August 8th, 2018 Edgefield advertiser. Yes, you're welcome to see it.
Request for proposals for sale of real estate, request proposal for the sale and redevelopment, redevelopment of real estate currently owned by the county. The full request for proposals package is available at edgefieldcountysc.gov. Yes. The, the request for proposals was, was advertised, but what I've said is it wasn't advertised for $50,000, which is what the agenda says. It was advertised for $50,000. Thank you, Ms. Ireland, for that. But I, I do have several other questions regarding the contract that was submitted as a attachment to the, to the agenda or as an exhibit to the agenda. And I, I read through that contract and seems to be some discrepancies in that. And I just would be interested in whether this contract is a valid contract or not. It, it says on page two of the contract, and this is item four at the top, that closing shall occur no later than 5:00 PM, owner before 5:14, 2021. It also says on page eight that expiration of offer is on 3/10 of 2021. And then this contract was signed on 11/28 of 2022. And I'm just wondering if, if this contract is still a valid contract or are we going to have to do a new contract? Could somebody tell me that, please? Ms. Marine, you may need to address that about these dates and expiration of offer and the closing date.
Mr. Pettigrew, you'll address me as the chair. I'll address the staff. Would you like me to ask that question?
Yes, I appreciate it, sir.
Okay, then, then please follow our decorum, please, and our rules. Thank you. Mr. Marine or, or Mr. Caddell, do you have the answer that we need to take up tonight? If you don't, that's okay.
I mean, the contract's been submitted to us. It has not been signed by us. Yes, there'll have to be some terms, dates changed and everything, because this was the original submission to us. But I believe in the ordinance, we're giving the county administrator and county attorney authorized and directed to work with the buyer's counsel, negotiate, and factually the transfer. And so that will be taken care of, but items related to subject of this transaction are subject to review and approval of the county attorney. So, I mean, this is still, this contract, of course, has been around, as you can tell, for years and everything, so.
Thank you.
There'll be terms back and forth.
This particular contract was signed 11/28 of 2022. Is, is, is this the only contract in existence at this time or, or are there, are there others?
When you say "signed," signed by whom?
That's signed by the buyer.
John E. McCracken, buyer, 11/28, November 28th of 2022, time 14/23.
That hasn't been signed by the county.
Correct.
Right, that's why I asked who signed it.
Right. This, this is what was made an exhibit to, to the agenda. That's why I'm referring to. Just was wondering if there are any other contracts or is this the only one?
Is there another one?
That is the only contract. It would be updated with the date of sale when we're prepared to sign it.
Okay, thank you. And also, it's one of the exhibits was this demolition proposal from SciTech Construction. And I'm just wondering, is SciTech an independent third party or are they recommended by Mr. McCracken? Are they in business with him? Or do you know?
I think, was that, yeah, I said, when y'all had that.
So that is a little unknown. The reason we got that information from SciTech is because Mr. McCracken had informed us that he was getting quotes for the demolition, the abatement, and the assessment of asbestos there. He did not have a copy with him. He did not have a written price. So I made contact with SciTech to get that information in writing for information. Since it's public information, we shared it. It's public information. It's not a bid. It's a budget number for information.
Okay, well, I just think it might be wise to look into whether that is an independent third-party proposal from SciTech or if SciTech is in business with Mr. McCracken. I think it would be wise to look into that prior to third reading, just so that council and the public have access to, to all information before making a final decision on that. That's all I have tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak on this ordinance in this public hearing? Okay, seeing no hands go up and nobody getting up, then council, we will close the pub, that public hearing. And before we move to old business, council, without objection, I'd like to take a five-minute recess if we can, please. So without objection, five minutes? Then we'll adjourn for five minutes. Thank you.
Mr. Jenkins, how are you? Good to see you. Very nice to have you joining us. We're so happy to see you with us. I'll see you when I get a train, I'm gonna show up in train tomorrow, but he's doing really good.
I had to go over here, so we, we both can't be talking, so.
I'm gonna do something now, because I didn't know they were all going that fast. Yep, I'm gonna go ahead and get them now.
Got it?
Alright, I'm asleep now.
There you go, there you go.
I could, I know that age, don't even work like that much.
Nobody knows, nobody does. I thought about giving school the other day. That's a whole lot you could have, brother. God, I'm going down here to go five minutes and deep, brother, and call in for half a day. I am so hard, I don't want to go, I don't want to live. And I thought about y'all down there at five.
You come on now?
I did, it's on Monday morning. I'm thinking boss, one thousand two hundred. I buy three nine now. I don't know what I'll see, I have to tell the boss, yeah. So he know all that, so I reckon we have a date Friday.
Now we have.
What y'all want to say?
Right, that's scrambled, bacon, toast, cheese.
So do I know the targets? Oh, they call. Both two names, they, we, we talk about, they went out there.
Ain't never named them.
Yeah, they named. See, cause general. Wouldn't be anybody, they wild. Me, no, you can't.
Okay, thank you.
Aretha, are we back on? Alright, if I can have everyone's attention, please, the recess is over for council, we appreciate, uh, your patience with us. I did want to discuss with the attorney and the administrator, the information we were given tonight about the meeting. I'm never too proud to say when you were wrong and we were wrong. We did not advertise this meeting correctly. So we will not be taking up anything on the agenda tonight that requires a vote, under new business or old business. What, uh, council, what we're gonna have to do, based on public hearings, based on, um, the time it takes to advertise a public hearing and all those things, we will, um, take, uh, I'm going to recommend, based on the law, that we take everything that's old business and new business and move it to the, uh, March meeting, our regular March, whatever that is, the first Tuesday in March meeting. All this would be there. We believe that none of this is time-sensitive, that it can wait a month. And if you wanted to have a special meeting, the earliest date, based on the timing of this meeting and the timing of the ads you have to do, would be the Thursday before the Tuesday. So we might as well just take it up on the Tuesday. Just go ahead and shift all this, we'll take this old and new business up in the, um, in the March meeting, and then, of course, whatever else would normally be on the, the March agenda. So March will be a long meeting, this one will be short. Now, that said, what I would like to do is, um, and I'll, the attorney can be thinking about what the proper, uh, motion is for all this in a moment. But, uh, what I would like to do is take up the items that are not for voting and go ahead and do, uh, skip all the way past old business, past new business, to public comments, and move to the second public comment section. And we'll hear those public comments, because people came to talk about some things they want to have in the public comment section for the other side. So, at what point would you like to, uh, have us to make an, uh, motion to do all this?
I think now would be a time to make a motion to postpone the items under old business and new business to our next publicly called meeting.
Okay. So let me, let me see if I can make the motion. I think the motion probably, council, needs to be that, uh, that we take the old and new business items and move them to the March, the regular March monthly meeting agenda, with the understanding that if any of these items, for some reason, becomes time-sensitive, we could call a special meeting just to consider that one item, whatever that one item may be. I don't think that'll happen, but that would be my motion. So that's my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I made the motion, Mr. Moody, seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. So then that will take us to public comments. And so I will open the second public comment section. The same rules apply, as I said a few minutes ago, about five minutes. You'll get the notice from the clerk when your four minutes is, is here, and then five minutes is up. So with that, is, there an actual signup sheet down there, and I've got a signup sheet here, I believe, but let me get yours. Just a second here, please. Okay, so, all that said, then the second comment period, I'm gonna start, uh, with Carol Waits.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and council members. I'm here to represent Brunson Community Center. A little background information on it, uh, Brent, it was Brunson School. And back in the day when there, there were two-room schoolhouses all over the county, this was one of those. And it was basically donated to, uh, the community. And since then, it's been used as a place to gather, uh, have food and fellowship. And we had the last meeting, uh, we advertised it as a meeting where we looked into renovations and maintenance of the building. It hasn't been kept up like it should. At one time, we had low attendance, now a lot of people moved into the community. And we actually had seventy people there at the last meeting. And I'm here tonight representing the community to ask for financial assistance to help upgrade the community center so that we can move the voting pole back to where it was. To my knowledge, uh, I only remember back to when I was eighteen, I worked the pole there. And it'd been there for fifty years, and we, it had to be moved because we needed to do some, uh, serious work on, uh, the plumbing, the septic system. The well, uh, is actually an old well that sometimes goes dry in the summertime. We would like to be able to install HVAC. Uh, right now, it has wood heat. And the chimneys are not in good shape, and I know it may seem like a, a personal thing with me coming to represent the community, but we had a meeting and seventy people discussed issues with it. It's used, uh, pretty much every month, uh, it's available to churches, basically anybody. It has a lot of sentimental value to me. And a lot of people have expressed an interest in getting the voting pole moved back there. But to do that, we need to look at these renovations, and it's not like we're not willing to do our part. We have a lot of people that have offered to donate equipment and time and energy, and, you know, a lot of the labor itself. So what I would like to do is see, uh, you consider putting this item in your budget. Because, you know, I know there are other two-room schoolhouses, but this one was a voting precinct. And I think it would be nice to get it back up to speed where it would be one again. And, and I don't take much of your time, I do appreciate your time. I know, um, when I was on the school board, most of the time, we didn't entertain questions, but if you have any questions to me, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
Questions?
I don't have no question, but, um, I know that is a great concern. And, uh, Dr. Waite had indicated that it'd been a voting plate for years, because I used to work on the voting pole, it may years, way years ago. And, um, if we can get you some funds to help get it back and start it, I think we are definitely looking towards it. David and I had talked about it, and also Dean, we made some mention of it, but we'll see what can we do.
Anything I can do to help the process, I'd be glad to. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you for coming.
Okay, next on the list is John Hudson.
Mr. Chairman and council, and guests, uh, I have a couple of things that's really, I think, is the county's heart, it's my heart. And I'm not an environmentalist, for God's sake, I ain't. But, uh, we are expanding, of course, y'all know that, uh, people are coming here buying land. They don't know what they're doing, but a lot of them are city people. So my heart is to, and I'm gonna talk to my council representative with some notes, but they're taking and they're letting washing out, they're letting creeks get full of dirt. They've, they're bringing in field and backfilling land, and I don't know what the stuff is, I didn't go look. So we got all these things going on, and I think if we work up a good plan, we could come up with some. I think when people buy land, they would have some ideas of what the county expects for them. You know, make sure they don't try to land a spaceship down here and all that kind of stuff. So we need some common sense and some direction from the county, so that our land don't, uh, erode away like other counties have. They starting to strip the woods, so the water is speeding up, it's all kind of issues coming. And I think we need to get ahead of it instead of play catch-up. So that's my heart in the land development here, and I don't think we have a good program on land development. I think we're kinda booting it down the road and hoping D-Heck and all them will take care of it all. They don't want to do it, so it's a game of cat and mouse here, so please keep that in your thoughts. And the other one is the, uh, the jail we're building. We've never spent this kind of money, and I don't know all the facts, but, uh, the Lord told me the other night, there should be three people going over there on the construction site and, uh, evaluating what they doing and what the subs and all are doing. And I've been in construction all my life, and I've been in some big building construction, uh, when they have their meetings every week. And I understand you have two people here within the, uh, house representatives, but you need to put a contractor that is independent, can speak his piece, and know what he's talking about to listen to these meetings, because if you don't do that, you don't have an outside source. The contractor's gonna ride the sheriff and whoever else is working with him, say, you need this change order, you need to do this, and this will be no end to this jail. And I don't think y'all have a control of the budget, and I don't even think y'all have bought the furniture yet, and all the stuff that goes with the jail. So this can really, uh, get interesting. So I pray that y'all get a hold of it and, and get ahead of it. That's just my thoughts on that. We need a jail, but we don't need no palace for prisoners. Amen? Now, as for me and my part of the Lord here, the Lord says this country belongs to us, Christians. We have sold it out, we selling it out and it starts, he said in education board meetings, county council meetings, we gotta decide who we living for. We're gonna serve man, which the Bible says is a liar and a thief. And God be true, and that's the only one. That's why I stand here, because I could tell the stories. Now, when we continue to please men, we're gonna keep spending money. I don't, I hope y'all get a hold of that. The people in this county don't want all this development. We want to be left alone, develop our land and be country people and let everybody talk about us. Let them say we hicks, it don't matter. But we don't want all this growth and I think I speak for most of the county. We like it like it is. We don't have to have all this. And every time a county grows, it's like the taxes gotta go up. It don't make sense. Why does a county get all this industry and build more houses, but they still need more taxes? I pray we don't go that way here. Just use common sense, which is the Holy Spirit. Let Him guide us. We don't have to make men happy and make deals with them in the back rooms. We need to make God happy, the Holy Spirit, and He's in all of us here. So, we need to, we need to evaluate ourselves. And there's always correction, rebuke and uplift. And that's where we gotta do each other and we gotta love each other through it and together, like you did tonight, when we all come together and let humility come in here, the Holy Spirit can work through us and we make wisdom, wise decisions. It's called His wisdom is not our wisdom. Amen?
Thank you. Okay, next on the list is Annette Holloway.
Good afternoon. Chairman Campbell, my councilman and the rest of the council. I appreciate you giving us an opportunity to be here tonight. Only America. A public water system is a regulatory term used in the United States and Canada, referring to certain utilities and organizations providing drinking water. And this is a definition from Wikipedia. There are eight public water systems serving Edgefield County. They are Edgefield County Water and Sewer and they serve over 27,000 residents. Titan Farms Camp Number Five. JW Yance One Oh One. J Forest Satchel Camp. JW Yance Four Oh Four. Titan Farms Long Cane MHP. Highway One Ninety One Camp. These are the eight public water systems serving Edgefield County. Most of us in the rural areas have water sources that are groundwater. Groundwater can become contaminated through leaching or discharge from the land above and can contain contaminants, even if there is no pollution sources nearby. Even the smallest amount of contaminants can make people sick. Visible signs that well water is contaminated is stains on your sink and toilets. That can indicate that you have high levels of iron and other acidic contaminants. A soapy taste to the water, salty or soapy, indicates high levels of minerals such as sodium or chloride in your drinking water. When your water smells like rotten eggs, it indicates that sulfur bacteria is in your water. Scale buildup or a scummy feeling for your water is associated with calcium or magnesium deposits. Green stains on your sinks and faucets could be an indicator of a high amount of acid in your water. It's acidic, such as iron, magnesium, copper and zinc. I'm here tonight to talk about some health risks that are involved with having poor water quality. Vomiting and nausea are immediate. Diarrhea. What really struck me was kidney disease. Liver disease. Summer cramps. Too much alkalinity, too much sulfur bacteria produces a slime substance that helps grow bacteria and produces hydrogen sulfide. Health risks for that include delirium and dementia. On July 28, 2010, the United Nations General Assembly adopted a historical resolution recognizing the right to safe and clean drinking water as a human right that is essential for the full enjoyment of life and all human rights. Access to water and sanitation is fundamental to everyone's health, dignity and prosperity. Marginalized groups are often overlooked and sometimes face discrimination as they try to access the water and sanitation services that they need. Governments on the federal level, state and the local level must have a human rights approach to water and sanitation improvements so that no one gets left behind. Greetings, I am Annette Holloway and I am a lifelong resident of Johnston and of Edgefield County, but I'm here tonight speaking for my church. We're located in the north side of the county. I'm here with the Springfield Missionary Baptist Church and I have several of our members that are here to support. Would you raise your hands, please? And of the community, thank you so much. Pastor Myers hosted a community needs assessment on January 19th of this year concerning the accessibility of clean and safe water in the north side area. This meeting highlighted the concerns of the citizens and other entities, the churches of the area, the water quality and the problems and its probable causes. It was expressed by many in attendance that these water issues have gone on for decades. They have been talking about this for decades with no hope of a resolution. Everyone in attendance demonstrated an overwhelming sense of they don't care about this part of the county. We would like to propose that the existing water and sewer system be extended to include the residents in this part of the county. It currently extends to Moore's Drive. We are petitioning the council to advocate for investigative research, a feasibility study that examines the following. The criteria that is used to determine where and how the infrastructure can be assessed. Who and what entities make that determination? The cost of a possible expansion. Monies are available to alleviate and assist in resolving the access to clean and safe water for all the citizens of this rural area. If this expansion proves to be fiscally impossible to do, currently, we, the citizens of the north side district, petition this council to assist in finding variable, viable and affordable solutions to accessing clean and safe water. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, make sure I've covered everybody. So, I believe now we're down to Mona and Louis. So, I'll let you decide who would like to go and/or both of you can go, of course. You both signed up.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name's Louis Pastowski. I live at 166 Rolling Hills Drive in Trenton. Subject is the point of order on yielding seating time to another speaker under Robert's Rules of Order pertaining to comments from the public. First of all, thank you for your opportunity to speak. There is an understandable need for county council meetings to be done in an orderly and timely fashion. This needs to be balanced with the needs of the citizen for freedom of speech to give proper feedback to all council members, to function as representative form of government to all issues. I had the pleasure of watching each member of council proudly take an oath to uphold the Constitution, including our Constitution's, the First Amendment, our freedom of speech. It was prioritized by our founders as the first. It councils restricted this right by aggregating our right under Robert's Rules of Order to not yield or cede time to a citizen deemed worthy of continued consideration. My proposal for your consideration, I support the necessity of a total 30-minute timeframe for citizen input with the exception for continuation. When a speaker needs more time to complete their statement, one yielding of time by another citizen should be allowed. Also, once the additional five minutes of time has expired, the speaker should be allowed to petition any council member to request for a motion to immediate, one, immediately extend time, two, stop, three, table the speaker for additional time to the next county session. Also, the chair, also, the chair could poll the audience, determine if the issue is of value for continued consideration. Then this could be decided by a majority vote by council. Basically, how can any item before council be reasonably determined if the issue cannot be heard by council? Please reconsider and amend the existing rules of order with this solution. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mona, did you have another thing you were gonna do? You signed up. I'll just make sure, okay.
I just wanna read an email that I sent to you folks. I think it was January 27th. "Good evening, council. I have had the privilege lately to work with county council offline, getting information and data that I never had access to before. Sure, there was a couple of times I didn't ask the right questions, so it's not just all your fault, it's mine as well, but here's what I've sent. Hail, I truly hope and pray we can continue the way we have begun the work this year. It is amazing and refreshing to see that you all do care. I want to commend Mr. Moody for taking time to explain issues in detail and I'm not even in his district. His transparency and his cooperation is not just welcomed, but very much appreciated. Much in this county is passed on by rumors and gossip. I initially fell into that trap. Then I began to ask questions and observe conduct and I discovered that gossips and rumors are harmful and need to horrid misunderstandings. Thank you for your time."
Thank you. Okay, council, that is everyone who signed up for the second public comments section. So, with that, I will close that public comments section and move to reports from county council members. Is there anything we need to hear from any county council member tonight? Mr. Moody?
I would just like to take this time to congratulate Sheriff Roland and his department for becoming ITS compliant. And for those who don't know what this is, this basically means that all records and data are being kept and maintained properly in accordance with guidelines set by SLED and FBI. And talking to Sheriff Roland, this is the first time in the history of the Sheriff's Department this compliance he has been met. Thank you.
Any other council members we need to hear from tonight?
Well, I would like to say, I would like to thank Springfield for coming out, speaking on the water in the area and I'm quite sure it's a necessity that the water, it's very bad up on that end and we will get together and talk. David and I were talking, most of the council members, see what can we come up with. I know everybody feel like we left out up on that end. I'm up on the end also, but we working towards trying to do better for the whole community, not up on that end, but the whole community. And I'm quite sure that we would do our best and we'd like to thank you. We talked with Annette, not Annette, Shirley. We had a conversation with, David and I had a conversation with her and we supposed, I think we supposed to have met with Ray, but we didn't get a chance to. But we not neglecting you all. Sometimes you don't get to the right person when you get ready to get something accomplished, 'cause I didn't know you all were having the meeting the other night, the 19th. So, I do apologize for not knowing that you all were having that meeting, but we will look into it. Thank you all for being here tonight.
Is anything else from council? Okay. Hearing nothing, then, we will move to the county administrator's report.
I just have three items to report. On the issue of animal control, construction has begun on the new building. The site has been cleaned off and the earthen pad for the concrete has been graded and we expect it to progress rapidly from this point as it is a steel building, construction will be pretty fast. Our next step in finding a way to operate this facility is to set up a working group, which we'll do this week, to develop the policies and procedures for actually running the shelter from day to day. That's very important. That will be quickly followed by developing a fee schedule, going out for bid for veterinarian services or possibly hiring a vet tech and developing relationships with various nonprofits. On the law enforcement facility, unfortunately, there's not a whole lot to report because the contractors have been battling a very wet site. They have really made a lot of progress in grading, but there's some components of it, like the detention pond, they've been unable to build because of the amount of rain. Our next progress report will be on February 15th. On the budget, we're starting our budget process. We're beginning it this week. Department head and elected officials submitted their request today. Over the next two weeks, I'll be meeting with those department heads and elected officials. We'll be discussing their request and we'll be putting together a preliminary draft budget over the next few weeks or so. That's all, thank you.
Any questions for the administrator? Okay, hearing none, thank you. We'll move to my comments, just a couple of brief things. First, I appreciate everyone being here tonight and being a part of what I call local democracy. So, we appreciate that. While every month is busy for county council and for our staff, I want to point out that in January, county council had a very productive retreat to help us bring momentum and information to the citizens on the kinds of work we want to put on our plates. I appreciate citizens supplying input and the council and staff did a great job of assimilating it into our retreat, so thank you. In January, the county council also had a joint meeting with the planning commission, which was also extremely productive and allowed us to better see the vision we all have for the future of Edgefield County. The fruits of those two sessions have laid the groundwork for the upcoming strategic plan that's being assembled by our staff right now. We'll all see a version soon and public input will be sought, as always. It will ultimately be adopted by council at an upcoming meeting. Finally, in January, we held our annual intergovernmental meeting. This meeting is the time to hear from many elected officials and appointed committee and board members. I know everyone there learned a lot about what projects are going on in the county and upcoming around the county. As elected and appointed leaders, it's good for all of us to hear this information and understand what all of us are doing. Finally, I want to apologize for our oversight in posting an agenda for this meeting. It is a mistake and we'll fix it in the future. I'll take full responsibility for the error and we'll see that it gets corrected. I have nothing else to report and with nothing else on the agenda tonight, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Was that a motion? Dr. Kenyon makes the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Ireland seconds, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. I was trying to decide, was that a motion?
She worried about getting to the ballgame. She tried to get to the ballgame.